... under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda today is the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, we're going to have our employee of the month next week. But we will move to the citizen of the month. Derek?
Thank you. Mr. Roosevelt Stewart, can you go to the podium, please? And you can have that young lady come with you. Elder Roosevelt Stewart from Detroit, Michigan. He moved to South Bend in 1997 with a passion to work with the youth. He then founded a youth program with vision and passion at 912 North Olive. He's worked with youth over the years in area programs with youth development, with drug awareness, and also teaches kids to resolve conflicts without using violence. Also teaching kids trades as carpentry, plumbing, electricity, and landscape with the vision that these people can get jobs later on in life. I've known Roosevelt for a long time. He's always there to help people out. We just finished a, or he did, a project with a lady that had a lot of issues with family members and drunk and trash and everything that you can imagine at a house. So he's done a fantastic job. He mentors several youth. A lot of them came down to the Martin Luther King Breakfast last year. Then we sponsored a couple tables, but he truly cares about people of South Bend. He works very, very hard to make kids learn that they can be successful in life. You may not like school, but there's certainly other avenues such as the things he is teaching them. So again, we really appreciate all the work that you've been doing and continue to do. So now, you may speak, young man.
Good morning. It's just a pleasure to do it. You know, I grew up in a household where I didn't have many privileges. So I just wanted to kind of like feel those voices through other children. That's my pleasure, you know, when they're to step up. When a fatherless home in our neighborhood, in our community, I'm the father on the north side, so the kids can come out, they spend time with me. I'm well-known in the community, so the community knows that their children are safe with me. And I just take that kind of serious. I know the north side is a bit rough around the edges, but I came from where they came from, so I can relate to those children there. And we can connect a lot better because the communication is a lot riller. I'm just not standing on the outside or from the suburbs and trying to speak to them. They can see me every day, they know we're living in the same places. We hear the same gunshots. And I'm just proud to be there for them. And this is my daughter. She's been in the program for a long time, too, and she helps mentor. Though she's advancing a lot, being a good citizen in school. So she can kind of like, you know, say, show her grades to the kids and say, hey, we got this. We can do this. Even when you don't understand it, you know, they can go to her and ask her, hey, can you help me out with my math or whatever it is? We want to kind of keep those things kind of open. I've been knowing Derek for quite some time. He kind of reminded me of George Papadopoulos. He was like the idea father, you know, because he stayed behind the alley from me. He was like the idea father to me. And I say, oh, Lord. Yeah, so I really appreciate you recognizing that, Mr. Dieter. I'm not the type of person that looks for recognition or nothing like that. I just do what I do. And just, you know, just as long as it feels good to my heart, I'm okay with that. Want to say something, Matt?
You have to speak. You have to speak as part of the gig. Come on, move over to the mic. Come on. Get over there. I'd like to thank the academy.
I just sort of thank the academy.
You're the one who typed the email, correct?
I'm the web.
You sent me that email on his bio? Or was that a desert daughter? Okay.
Well, we pass out shoes to, if you get, like, you give my dad your report card and he see you trying your best, he'll pass out you some shoes. Jordans, Nikes, any kind of shoes you could think of.
Very good. Thank you. And this comes from, became from all the commissioners for your awards, so everybody recognizes the stuff you do. Commissioners, do you like to say anything to Mr. Stewart?
Sure. You might not be seeking recognition, but glad that you were nominated and Derek put you forward. The positive impact you're having on the community and youth is really inspirational. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, and I'm thankful you're helping the children, yes. Thank you very much.
And coming from another northwest side, as Mr. Augustino grew up on Van Burn Street. So we're, well, I'm still out there, he's up in the suburbs, but he gets it, so appreciate it. Come on up, man.
Do you want your daughter?
Yeah. She's trying to grab a picture.
Give it to Mr. Fortia, he'll get a picture for you. And these are from Tiffany's, I believe.
Can we get your picture here? If you can put that down there.
Come on over here. Little pressure, huh? Congratulations.
Good job, buddy. Seriously? Who is that? Did you mention that to her?
Yeah.
Next, we, excuse me, next we have our youth of the month.
Shamar Jackson. Come on up, man. You can have the family can come up with you? Come on.
Superintendent?
Shamar from Riley High School is a senior student athlete who attends Riley High School. He's a dual-sport athlete that participated on the football team and is now playing basketball. In his first year playing football since his freshman year, he was unanimously voted as the captain by his peers and coaches. He also carries a 3.0 GPA, which is very important for your next venture into college. With having success in the classroom and on the field, he started to garner the attention of many colleges and continues to get his academic and athletic journey playing college football. He would like to study either criminal justice or sports management. Along with being named captain, he's a member of the Student-Athlete Leadership Council. He is a positive role model on and off the field. A great young man will achieve amazing things in life. So where are you going to go to college?
Still haven't decided yet. I got another visit today. Just trying to go wherever I feel most comfortable.
Okay.
And I fit into the best system.
All right. That's awesome. So first, any family members would like to speak about this young man? Y'all know him better than me. Get up there. Come on.
I guess I'll start off by saying, life not easy, you know? When you born into this world, you get no manual. You just got your parents and friends and family to tell you, you know, how to live your life the right way. And not everybody gets it easy. Some people get it easy, some people don't. I'm proud of my little brother because he didn't have it easy. He didn't have like the best situation. As far as, you know, where we from, it's not a lot of things offered, but he took what he had and he ran with it. You know, he works hard, got a job and juggled school, work, and kept his grades, sports, and did good at work, loving. They love him around the neighborhood, and I'm proud of him for that. So I'm just a proud big brother standing back watching my little brother continue on his journey of success. So thank you guys for presenting him with that and honoring him and help building him of his self-esteem.
Right.
So he can go further in life. Appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you for being part of his life. Come on, somebody else get up there.
Good morning. This is my baby son. So, you know, I'm kind of happy. I'm not kind of, I'm very happy with where he stands right now. Didn't have to push him a lot. I think what helped him accept a lot of the stuff that was presented in front of him is you never, I never judged him. You know, when he was running, doing his things and running and playing his sports, I never came off of it like, oh, man, you could have. I just, you did good, man. Next year, we got to get bigger, we got to get stronger. You know, you're going to get big. That's in your heritage. You know, we're all bigger guys, six foot or more. So I was really happy with the way he was presented with the information that I gave him and what he did with it. So, you know, I'm very, very happy. This was a surprise. I was like, oh, okay. Well, let me see how he handles this and what's the next level. So I'm very proud of Shamar and my whole family, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the family? This goes out to millions of people.
Hi. So I just want to say that I just found out yesterday that he was receiving this award, although I am not surprised. He is very talented and amazing. He's been, you know, with me through obviously my whole life. He is my little brother. I've been supporting him, and it's been very tremendous to watch him like grow into his passion this year. Going into football, it's been really amazing for him. I saw like a huge change and him wanting to grow into being a better person and just, you know, really going for it and having like a drive and a commitment and motivation for him to pick that up at such a young age, I think is amazing. And I'm really proud of him, and I can't wait to see where he goes next.
Anyone else from the family?
Good morning. I am Shamar's mother. I couldn't be prouder. That's all I can say. I could not be prouder than I am today.
Okay, thank you. So it's pretty unique that the superintendent would take time out of his day to come down here, but he has done that for use of the South Bend Corporation that we have honored. So it's your stage, young man.
I do think Shamar wanted to say one more thing. No, please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you guys for recognizing just how hard I've been working. I mean, like my brother said, it wasn't always easy, but I always tried my best and tried to do the best I could with what I had. And then coming back to Riley and then meeting Coach Lee, like, he really helped change my life because I was never a football player. I didn't really find too much passion in it, but then this summer I picked it up and then like I ran with it. Like, I've been loving it. I love the coach and staff. Then the game has just helped me change my characters in such a better way, helped me become such a better leader. And I loved playing with the freshmen and then the sophomores to try to help guide them at that age. And getting new to high school, I didn't have that guidance when I first came, so I tried to give that to them so that when they get to my seat, they already know what they want to do. And like they already have a plan out and they're just following that plan. That's pretty much it. I love Riley, I love, I mean, I love Mr. Henderson. He really cares about us, and without him and these guys right here, I wouldn't really be where I was at. I just want to thank you guys for their award.
And I just want to say how proud we are of Shamar and all the students that you've honored. And I want to thank the commissioners once again for honoring one of our students. And we're so grateful to his folks for choosing Riley. We're very proud of Riley and the leadership of Mr. Henderson. But thank you all for honoring our students. I'm really grateful.
Cool.
I think they're going to want to take a picture now.
All right. First, great job for everybody. Congratulations to the family. You're a fine young man here. I know Henderson from the Washington days, coached with Lee a long time ago. So you got good coach, good role models there. And you guys came back to beat Washington when we had the ceremony for number four. I remember, that's a good game. But I'll get, as Mr. Mich knows, the leading receiver of the NFL, I'll get some gloves from him to get to you. And then anything else you ever need and all the stuff going down your journey, just let us know, we'll be glad to help out. Any other words from the commissioners?
Just want to say congratulations, well-deserved. And it's going to, just listening to your family and the superintendent speak, it's going to be exciting to see where life leads you in the future. I'm sure you will accomplish a lot, as you already have.
And congratulations on being such a good athlete.
Thank you.
Enjoy athletes, yes.
Can y'all come up?
Come on down. Can you type, give this little sidebar. Hey, Pop, hey, come on, get up here. Come on. Is that, can you get that over?
He probably stood here somewhere.
Was it still get down on one knee thing, man?
No.
Yeah.
You want me to get him?
There you go. Yeah, him up.
Get that chest out, dude. Come on, get that big chest out.
One more of my ancient family.
Y'all ready?
Yep.
Number three. Number one.
Come on, dude, one up. There was a Dieter that said don't fuck. So they'll be, next year, we have a thank with everybody that's one traffic here, so I'll let you know. Do you know anything else? What's I hear you were? Twelve? Yeah, almost here.
We like your shirt.
I'm a northwest side guy.
I know, years ago, I lived on Fox with the Carters.
Carter, Carter, Carter.
And we on Fox Street. And I thought, one of them, huh?
100 blocks.
Yeah.
100 blocks.
Uh... The Dieter I knew, the partner that was right there.
All right, man.
Next, we have our business of the month, which this month is Nick's Studio. Come on up. If there's others with you, they can come up, too. Come on. Sure.
Everybody's got to talk.
Didn't tell you about that part, did we?
I know, no, you did not.
Well, by way of introduction, Nikki Walisinski is the founder and owner of Nick's Studio, beauty salon in Granger. It's a little different because this is not a business that's been in existence for a very long time. It was founded earlier this year. Reason we're nominating you and honoring you is because you're living the dream. You're somebody who served in the industry, worked in the industry for 12 years.
Nine, almost nine years, yeah.
Almost nine years, I'm sorry. And learned what it takes to run a successful business. You certainly have a successful business to happen to see your schedule, which is very full. So you got off to a great start. And really, you're an inspiration to others who want to achieve that and achieve their dreams. And that's one reason why we're happy to honor you and recognize your success, not only this year, but going forward.
Thank you very much. I guess I just have to say, wow, I'm honored to even be here. I never expected this. It's been quite the journey, the last several months of opening my business and getting everything organized. And I've been truly blessed with the clientele who has followed me and supported me and encouraged me and helped me and along the way. I've never dreamed of having that, and it makes me realize I'm obviously doing something right if they're all following me. So I'm very, very happy for that and honored to be here.
Great.
Thank you.
Next?
Hi, I'm Nicole's mom. I'm very proud of her. I've, she's worked very hard to get this business opened. She's saved, she's planned, and all this with two little kids and one only 18 months old, so I know how hard she's worked. And this is a great achievement, and I thank you for honoring her with this award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for acknowledging her. When I acknowledge her and show her recognition, she thinks that I need to because of who I am to her. So it really means a lot coming from you guys, and she really appreciates it, and I really appreciate it. It took, I mean, two or three years to convince her that this is something that she could do. So it's really nice to get that from somewhere else as well. And I'm very fortunate to have her in my life with our family, and so thank you guys.
I want to thank you guys for recognizing my niece. This is my niece. And with her personality and her commitment and her support from, you know, Cody and that, I'm sure she'll go plenty far. She has the best personality, and I know her clientele just love it, so. I thank you for awarding her this, and she will do great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, all of your comments. Certainly, Nikki, you've done a lot on your own, but it always helps when you have such a good support system with your family and you really are an inspiration to others who want to achieve their dreams. Any other comments?
Sure, congratulations. Great to see young people in the right direction, doing positive things for the community. So appreciate what y'all doing.
Yes, true, yes, thank you.
Dito. Come on up, and let's get a picture.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, yes, I have to run though now. I have a fine eleven.
Bye, you guys, take care. Take care, bye. Have a good day.
You have to stay, Mr. Augustino.
All right. Next item on the agenda are the bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. First up is bill number 157-22, which becomes ordinance 131.22, a salary amendment and transfer for the Department of Human Resources. Any questions, or do we have a motion?
So motion to approve this ordinance, 131-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going, aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is bill number 158-22, which becomes ordinance 132-22, another salary amendment and transfer for the Department of Human Resources. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance, number 132-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 155-22 becomes ordinance 133-22, a salary amendment and transfer for the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this ordinance, 133-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, bill number 156-22, which becomes ordinance 134-22, a salary amendment for the Department of Infrastructure, Technology, IT. Can't ever say that. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this ordinance, number 134-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 154-22 becomes ordinance 135-22, transfers and appropriations for November of 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance, number 135-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, bill number 146-22, which becomes ordinance 136-22. It's a code book amendment approving the change in fee amount for mortgage foreclosure sales. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 136-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, bill number 148-22, which becomes ordinance 137-22, the General Obligation Bond Series 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 137-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, bill number 149-22, which becomes... And finally, Bill Number 149-22, which becomes Ordinance 138-22. It appropriates proceeds from the General Obligation Bonds. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve, Ordinance Number 138-22.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is approval of a settlement agreement with Maudlin Shively. Mr. Augustino.
Good morning, Commissioners. Peter J. Augustino, Attorney at Law, with offices at 131 South Taylor Street. First of all, congratulations to you, Mr. Baxmeyer.
Thank you.
You bring calm to government, and that's a good thing. And Commissioner Dieter, I don't want to leave you out. It's nice to see you involve the community. It's always important to remember that you can't substitute the truth that comes from regular citizens, so that's a good thing. And Commissioner Fleming, thank you as well for being a gentle voice in government.
How about Mr. Mish Pete, since you're throwing him a lot today?
He's very capable.
All right.
And I would ordinarily let him just handle this thing, except I just wanted to come up here and say a few things to you.
We're happy to see you, Mr. Dieter.
Thank you.
Anything for Sky, or Mr. Dalton, or Frank, or anybody else, or new?
Well, they haven't been around long enough yet.
Man, oh, man.
They need a few more years.
Okay, all right.
So before you is a settlement agreement involving an employee of the Sheriff's Department. This is an employment claim in terms of how her sick time and FMLA time was handled. And so, for the reasons we discussed in executive session, it was better to resolve this case at this point in litigation to save money than ask for your approval of the settlement agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Augustino? If not, do we have a motion to approve the settlement agreement?
Yes, a motion to approve this settlement agreement with Maudlin Shively.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good, Pete. That was good, man.
Next, we have approval of the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Limited Leaf Collection and Disposal Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Fotia, Project Manager for the Board of Commissioners, offices on the seventh floor of this building. Before today is basically a cleaning up from the amendment to the contract earlier this year when additional subsidies were added to bringing it from 3,000 to 4,500 subscribers would get that subsidy. And while the amount was changed in the attachment, the language capping the not-to-exceed amount in the body of the contract was not amended at that time, so this amendment just takes care of that.
So your reference to cleanup was a pun intended?
It was.
Okay. Any questions regarding this?
Just glad to update this. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the Second Amendment for Agreement with the Limited Leaf Collection.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, on the Commissioners section of the docket, approval of order for measured and flat rate business line services for certain contracts with AT&amp;T.
Yes, Commissioners, I would ask that you table this item to a future meeting there. We'd like to go back to Com Control, the company that we contract out to help with our AT&amp;T, and be able to more definitively say what these four lines are for before we ask the Board to take any action on it.
I think that's a good suggestion. We need to know what those lines are really for, and...
Good.
Do we have a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's been tabled.
Thank you.
Next, under the Health Department, approval to apply for a three-year grant through IDOH to develop and implement services to address cancer prevention. Is anybody going to speak on that?
Yes, this is Amy Rupee, the Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. And before you is a request for support to apply for a grant through the Indiana Department of Health in order to develop and implement services to address cancer prevention in St. Joseph County. It is a three-year grant, and the amount has not been determined. There is no max amount tied to the grant.
Since my wife is a cancer survivor, I would certainly encourage actions such as this. Any questions?
Amy, do you have any idea what that amount would be?
In the past, the average amount of grants awarded were 300,000, five, between 300,000 and 500,000 for the three years.
Okay.
So we haven't decided on how we are going to budget that just yet. We're in the preparation phases for the budget process of it, but it'd probably be around 300 to 500,000 dollars.
And then you guys have gotten a grant in the past on this?
No, this is a new grant.
Okay.
This is a new grant opportunity.
Gotcha. And then other cities that have may have gotten this grant in the past, do you know of any of the data that was received that showed that they were able to prevent a certain amount of cancer, or you guys don't know yet?
Oh, we don't have that information yet.
All right.
And again, I'm just thankful that we're going to be hopefully moving forward to address cancer prevention, and I pray for that, too. Thank you so much.
There being no other comments, do we have a motion to approve the application for the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is another grant application by the Health Department through the Indiana Department of Health utilizing community health workers.
Yes, this is Amy Rupee, and this is the grant, this goes hand-in-hand with the previous grant. They are putting out an RFP for the Cancer Prevention Grant as well as a Community Health Worker Grant, so we would like to apply for this one as well, requesting support to have community health workers out in our community to be able to prevent chronic disease, tobacco use, and food insecurities.
Any questions or comments?
Sure. Do you know how much this grant will be?
This would be the same. There is no max cap, so we would go between 300,000 and 500,000 for the three-year cycle.
Okay. And then, will you use current, healthy part workers, or are you going to have to get more?
No, this would be the current community health workers that we have on staff.
Okay.
Yeah, and I understand it would support five of the full-time employees, is that right?
That is correct. We currently have 10 community health workers on staff, and we're hoping the Cancer Prevention Grant will fund five of those to continue, and this grant to continue the other five. The current grant we have for our community health workers does expire in August of 2024, so we are seeking other funding to be able to keep those programs going.
Good.
If there are no other comments, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this grant.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superior Court is requesting approval to submit a 2023 grant application for court-certified interpreters.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Barheit. I am the new Superior Court Administrator, week three, so bear with me. My office is located at 101 South Main in the basement, and I'm here today to ask for a grant application for interpreters that we have applied for in the past. The past two years, we have received 11,500 dollars, and this helps offset the court-mandated fees for interpreters.
Bring some of our tax dollars back here.
Yes.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What languages?
Spanish, and I'm going to botch this, Serbian. We had to use three Serbian interpreters last year.
Okay.
Which was new.
Any Polish or Hungarian?
No.
Okay.
No request for it yet, anyways.
Okay. Just a thought.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this grant application.
See.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Going, aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Infrastructure Planning and Growth, Mr. Metters. First item is approval of RNS 92101, Change Order Number Two.
Sky Metters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, county engineer, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of this building. This first item is Change Order Number Two for a project that was let in 2021 that included some work for, that we did for Penn High School. And the way those projects work is, at times, we'll go ahead and bid some of their projects with ours as a cost savings to them, and then they will reimburse us for the money that was spent on their project. And this was some additional paving that they requested in the amount of $30,285.40. And so, once this change order is approved, we can go ahead and pay the contractor, and then Penn will then reimburse us for that money. I'm happy to answer any questions, request your approval.
Any comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve this Change Order Number Two.
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't go away. Approval of Engineering Services Agreement for the New Carlisle Highway Garage Capital Improvements.
Well, this is the beginning of a different process of this project. It's also the culmination of a lot of hard work and effort that went on this summer in trying to move this project forward and get things where they need to be and get funding for this. And what this is, is this is the agreement from DLZ to do the design, construction documents, bid phase assistance, and then part-time construction inspection for maintenance and repair items out at the New Carlisle Garage. This project will be funded by the Redevelopment Commission. We have reviewed this proposal, and I request your approval.
Well, you're right. This is the next step in the process and something that is needed. I was out there the other day, and certainly, this will be an improvement to that facility.
Yes. This has been, been reviewed for a long time, and it was sort of, all this and the next item were very in flux for a while. And then Commissioner Dieter came on, and we got things moving, and then the rest of the council and Commissioners got on board, and we really just got to this point where we could actually make a movement now and get, start getting some hard things. And you're right, it's necessary improvements for these aging buildings.
Well, it really was a collaborative effort.
Yes, very much so.
Derek?
Sure. Thanks, Sky. This is, for those who don't know, before Sky got here, lost about 30% of our highway garages were shut down. I have no clue why that was done, but whatever. So the moral story is, actually, last year, we started this. Councilman Krasinski, who previously had been in this story, had a background on all this stuff, so I think it's great. And I'm really pleased to see Mr. Shally and the redevelopment pony up on this type of stuff, which they should do more often. So again, appreciate all the work we're doing. Carl's jumped on this, and so I think we're doing a great job of fixing all of the highway stuff for the county as a whole, which is very big, if y'all don't know, in the amount of miles. And good job on the first snow, by the way. So, again, this is a good start of fixing all the things that have been left actually dormant for a long time, so appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this Agreement for the New Carlisle Highway Garage Capital Improvements.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is a similar agreement for the Woodland and North Liberty Garages Capital Improvements.
Yes, this agreement, it's pretty much very similar to the one that was just approved. It's just a different funding source. So this is, will be for our Woodland and North Liberty Garages, which are in the southern part of the county and serve those areas. Quite a few things that we need to do to bring those up to standards and operating as efficiently as we would like them to. And we have reviewed this, and also, I want to personally thank everyone for their hard work in getting it to this point. It was definitely a team effort. And, you know, there was a lot of work done previously before I came on board to move things along, too, so I don't want to leave out those people that really put in some effort earlier on. It was, it's quite a difficult project, but I'm happy to see where it's at. It means more work for our department, but it's work I'm happy to take on. So we have reviewed this agreement with DLZ in the amount of $450,000, and we recommend your approval. It will be funded using general obligation bonds.
Any comments about this one?
Same thing. I'm glad that we hired you, because it's been a good get to work with everybody instead of this large, large, multi-million dollar, big thing that was proposed, but I think it's good to work with all the satellite services and the places we have already to bring them up to speed, which makes it easier for trucks to get out in the snow. They're in that site of town. We're not leaving and driving 12 miles to get to a spot we're close, because we've been out to all those and working with Charlie and all the street people when we had, I think Mish bought, what, 300 doughnuts or something out, and we took to North Liberty. So, again, good work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this services agreement with the Woodland and North Liberty Garages Capital Improvements.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going, aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, approval of contract with JAS Contracting for Abatement Services for the St. Joseph County Code Enforcement Program.
Good morning. Abby Wiles, Area Plan Commission Director. This is a contract with JAS General Contracting to assist us with implementation of our mowing and public nuisance ordinances for the code enforcement program. We let requests for quotes, RFQs, earlier this spring for contractors that were interested in contracting with us for the program. We received none. We are now able to negotiate with contractors that are interested in contracting with us. This is one of two contracts that I'm currently working on, one that I'll bring here shortly. And this has been reviewed by Brandy Ecker and Bree in procurement, and we're asking for your approval.
Well, disappointing that we didn't get any quotes, but I'm glad that you moved forward.
Yes.
To implement.
Yeah.
Do you think that the reason people didn't bid yet is they really don't know the extent of all the work you guys are doing yet, or you don't know?
When we bid, when we released the, I'm looking at Bree because she helped me immensely when we...
Well, come on up, Bree.
When we released the quotes back in the spring of 20, or the spring of this year, what we heard throughout was that folks were having trouble finding workers.
Workers, okay.
And that they didn't understand the full mix of what we would contract with them on. So, for JAS Contracting, admittedly, this guy is interested in abatement only, not in mowing, so doing cleanup of public nuisance items under the ordinance. Appliances, scrap metal, tires, everything that you would see as, that's defined under the Public Nuisance Ordinance. What we have is a master agreement for non-towing that includes mowing and cleanup, and we'll work with the individual contractors on the items that they're willing to work with us on.
Okay, but that, um, does it make sense at some point that if we can't find that, we would do that in-house by hiring part-time people, maybe?
Potentially. Our interim solution, and this is no secret, has been that Sky's guys have been helping, uh, and then they've been invoicing us based on hourly rate and equipment hourly rate, and, uh, that really has been the interim solution to get us through the first year of enforcement while we search for a more permanent solution. This is the start of that.
Right, okay, but yeah, you can, we'd be glad to help out in what y'all need, because since this started, all of I have been getting is nothing but compliments, or has it one person who's complained that we're overreaching or we're looking over their shoulders, so the three people you have are awesome hires, so good job. But anything else that you need, because this has been very successful, and it's passed the eye test when I drive around, so, good job.
Thank you.
And it's a one-year agreement, so we can see how this works.
Correct, and, uh, as I said before, this is not the exclusive contractor. We are working on master agreements with a couple of different contractors. The work is there, folks, to have a bench of contractors on, uh, that have contracted with us. For example, we have three towing contractors that really, uh, kind of mirror the territories for our code enforcement inspectors. There's enough work to go around for all of them, and inevitably, people will be on vacation or unavailable, and it, it's better to have a bench to pull from when we need the work done.
Thank you for your hard work to get this done, appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this contract with JAS.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There being no old business, we will move on to public comments.
Good morning. Deborah Doral, 21677, Otten Road, South Bend. Thank you for your work this morning. Um, in this day of honoring people in the community and employees, I would like to bring up Mark Espich's name, who I am very happy to see his name again. He is almost always zooming into these meetings. He works managing and monitoring our water quality for the county, and as a member of the public who is very concerned about water quality and land use, and as we just heard, various kinds of cleanups, Mark is a very high-quality employee. I feel that the public and the communities are in good hands with him because his energy, his passion, his expertise, and his diligence are, um, the kind of thing that the public appreciates. We feel very safe in his hands. He's been very accessible to the public with helping educate us about how we do protect our water. And I would like to bring up his name to nominate and consider for an award such as you've been giving this morning, because I don't think that his, uh, or I do think that his services are indispensable. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. Uh, there are a couple of meetings coming up later in today, one at 1:30 of the Area Plan Commission, the other at 5:30, which is a committee meeting of the County Council. Uh, they will be considering, um, approving the overlay, uh, uh, the new overlay of the IEC, um, out in New Carlisle area. And also, uh, terminating written commitments on the property that ex, that existed prior to now. And I, I'm, first, I'm concerned that this overlay will convey proprietary interests to Altium, whoever ha, whoever happens to move into there, and give them sole authority to do with that land whatever they choose to do without any oversight, because there is no, when, when they're given this sole proprietorship, there is no public hearing process, uh, to say, yes, we like, or no, we don't like. The public is completely taken out of this. But, let's make no mistake, there should always be a public hearing. If it's for putting different color siding on my house, I ta, I basically have to go get a permit from the county to do, to do that. Why shouldn't something this, of this size be required to present information for public feedback? They are, they are, whoever it is, is moving into our community. It's, it's our home. They should treat it like it's their home. Be a part of the community, include us in the conversation. My concern, uh, right now is, should it be Altium, uh, LGGM, uh, they are currently in a battle over in Lordstown, Ohio, Warren, Ohio, uh, where they have promised all along to allow card check for the employees, uh, the hourly employees in this facility, this, this Altium-type plant, and they have been in production since August 31st. Last report I got as of November 2nd, the United Auto Workers have tried time and time and time again to get a card check there. They will not permit it. I say if that, if Altium is the one that is ultim, ultimately coming in here before they come in here, they have to show good faith. They have to show that, because they said, "We're going to abide by the National Labor Relations Act." Young woman named Brooke Wade, speaking for Altium, says, "We're going to abide by the National Labor Relations Act. Put your money where your mouth is. It's time to walk the walk." If you're not going to allow it there, why should we believe anything you tell us here? Follow through on your word over there, which is the legal word. The National Labor Relations Act requires that you approve a card check of the employees if they request it. They haven't, they have yet to do so, uh, and that should be considered before approving anybody coming into the IEC. My friends with labor will make sure everything is taken care of.
Danny, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
Anybody else in the room wish to make a comment?
I think Mr. Agostino wants to sing a verse of We Are the World. I think that's, are you up, Pete?
I will spare you that tragedy. Thank you. Have a wonderful day, everyone.
You, too. I see we have several hands up on the Zoom meeting. Please give us your name and address.
I can go first. My name is Dave Lang, 17530 Bendin Oaks Court, representing the Knollwood West Homeowners Association. Our subdivision has some of the most dense leaf collection areas in the county, and we've come before the Commissioners a number of times regarding leaf collection matters. We have a suggestion that would help our area and also benefit the whole county. The limited leaf collection program is really sort of a contract from what we can see with one collection service, St. Joe County Recycling, which is actually located in Niles, Michigan. If you look at the logs of the Resource Center where the county allows the leaves to be dumped, you will likely see over 30 contractors that are picking up leaves. Yet our tax funds are spent with just one contractor. How much do they receive to subsidize the pickups? How much do they get for marketing to force us to put up a sign in front of our, um, uh, homes to advertise their business? 600, 700,000 dollars? Our area works with a different vendor, and many other, um, landscape contractors also offer leaf pickup to all of our residents. The county could really help build a free-market competitive system for leaf collection that would lower prices for all with one simple move. Open the Resource Center for three weeks in November from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. Currently, the center is closed at lunch. It wraps up the day at 3:45. All you need is one person as a gatekeeper for the extra four hours a day till Thanksgiving, even at $30 an hour, that's less than $2,000. Maybe trim the marketing budget a little bit with, uh, St. Joe County Recycling and help build a competitive market for all. That's our suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Cheryl Nix.
Good morning. Cheryl Nix, 17901, Strive, South Bend, 46635. Um, I agree with Mr. Caruso that we should always require public hearings when doing anything, uh, that's going to impact neighborhoods and areas of our county, and I also agree that we need to keep an eye on what Altium's doing, um, in Ohio to make sure that they're going to follow through on their promises. But I also wanted to, uh, congratulate Amy Rupe and our County Health Department for once again finding a way to bring much-needed funds into our county. I'm so proud of them for getting the $3 million federal grant that brought 10 community health workers into our area, and we're looking at grants that could bring 600,000 to a million dollars into our area over the next three years, and I, I think it's remarkable, and I applaud them for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I believe, is Robin Chellnor.
Hi, good morning. Robin Chellnor, 25612, Shorewick Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. Um, so looking at the agenda today, I saw that Wolf Commercial Roofing had submitted, um, a request. If you go to paragraph two on the second page, it talks about however, I'm quoting, it first talks about normal protocol, what they would do to fix, I guess, a, a roof at Portage Manor that is failing, and it's in quotations. However, with the intent to tear down this building in the next three to five years, as discussed, we are submitting the following. They go on in the sec, the third and fourth paragraph to talk about how the plan is not a good plan. Um, it's basically just a band-aid approach, and then if you read on to the fifth paragraph, it even talks about putting visqueen, um, over the top of the, the bars to keep, um, as a barrier so that water and debris doesn't fall on food, because that is a food storage area. So just a lot of concerns around that. Um, is this the best plan? I think it's at the tune of like $37,000, um, which just, you know, knowing the financials of Portage Manor, that's, that's not a great deal for a, for a band-aid and some visqueen. So again, echoing, public hearings on these important things need to happen, and if the writing is on the wall, three to five years, as discussed, is in black and white. Um, also talking about the bonds for the garages, I'm, I'm so happy to hear that they're doing that. I lived in New Carlisle and commuted for eight years to South Bend for, for work, um, so I know the importance of plowed roads and having a garage out there. However, there was a plan, and why Portage Manor gave up the farm, which was a source of revenue for us, was because Andy and Bill had presented a plan at, I think, Mike Mish's office, to the Board of Directors, to do a big garage, and they had this whole big plan, and they're going to help Portage Manor, um, in its renovations that were, were being discussed at that time. So again, you know, let's be honest, let's be transparent, let's talk about all the moving parts, and that really helps the community to trust, um, what's being done. So important. Proverbs 2323 says, "Buy the truth and sell it not." So I would just ask that, you know, you're in these positions to do the work of the people, let's, let's have public hearings, let's hear what's going on, why are things changing? Who made that decision? I think it's a great decision, but who made the, the first decision to make a big garage and, and, and let go of the others? Um, all of these things need to be in the light. Why are we dumping, um, aggregates on farmland, fertile farmland at Portage Manor currently across from the, the cemetery?
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else wish to speak that's on the Zoom call? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
So you.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote? Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote? Aye. All right, we're done.
Hey, Sky, do we do those signs for, uh, Porridge Woods for the hunting thing?
Recording stopped.
I got the highway department on, you know, getting those together. Yeah, let me know, because I think we should do a release.
I got four of them right now.
Okay.